Hi Nate.
Hey Jesse, how you doing?
Hello Bruce.
Hello. Nate, while we're waiting for the other two, I have a question that was posed by my co-housing colleagues. As you may or may not know, our community is essentially a series of flag lots that run through to Pine Street. There were four of them, plus the front lot. One of those flag lots is kind of outside the others with this pole that appears to be, is on the other side of an intervening couple of houses. And one of the residents of the outer house seems to have encroached here. And there's a concern of the community that some kind of adverse, that we have to prevent some kind of adverse possession of the portion of the lot pole. And I was charged with asking you whether, I mean, I said that if, 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 if the lot pole was diminished by adverse possession, that would create a non-conformity for the, one of the flag lots. And I thought that that was possible if adverse possession were, is there, have you had any experience or know of any situation where adverse possession has de-legitimate, has encroached upon, you know, a conforming dimension and reduced it to a non-conformity and what happens when that happens? And if that's a long answer, then I'll, I'll, I'll call you separately or I just wanted to say that's, I've been asked to ask you by my colleagues.
I, I don't, you know, I, in previous, I'd been informed that, you know, the easiest way to acknowledge it is to have like a certified letter by an attorney sent to the owner stating clearly that you're aware of it and have it dated. And then, you know, there's, they can't claim that it meets the standards for adverse possession. But I don't know of any, I'd have to look at like, you know, case law to see what.
Don't, don't, don't even think about that. I guess sadly, my community don't trust my judgment in most things. And I've said both of those things that, but somehow or other, I'm a little too close to them for too long. And I'm, everything I say is to be taken with a grain of salt. So I'll just say that you said what I said and we'll leave it at that.
All right.
And Fred's here, so we don't need to text us.
All right. Hi everyone. Nate, you want to start us, start the meeting?
I think it has, it was, I started just a minute ago.
All right, welcome everyone to the Housing and Zoning Subcommittee of the Amherst Planning Board. Today is Monday, November 10th, 2025 is 11:02 AM. I will, we'll call attendance and then we'll get into the agenda. Okay, Bruce Colton.
I am here.
Angus MacLeod.
Present.
Fred Harwell.
I am here.
And I, Jesse Major, am here as well. Okay. First on the agenda is announcements, so announcement I have is that I failed to send you all minutes to look over. So we'll do that for next time. So apologies. I did just send you earlier some dates proposed for the next couple of months. And we can talk about that maybe at the end of the meeting or next time if you want to just compare calendars. Any announcements for anyone else? Okay. Then I guess we'll move on. No minutes to approve. First thing on our agenda was a debrief and review of the North Amherst meeting. Since we were not all there, we did talk somewhat at the planning board about it. But yeah, I don't know, Bruce, you want to start us with a quick summary again, just mostly for Angus and Fred.
Oh, I, I mean, I said what I said, I think both Fred and everybody was saying, I don't have anything more to add. But I could take questions if, if there was, if we have more time to explore that. And I haven't, haven't really thought of anything substantive difference to, to.
The one thing I was going to raise, I mean, I've been thinking about it quite a bit. And it's not that it's a reason we should not proceed. I think it's going to be a hard sell, but I think we knew that to some degree already. And then I was, this morning I was in a meeting, a UMass meeting, but the conversation was about infrastructure, also because of the events of the weekend in Olympia Drive fire. And someone said very pointedly, well, this is a reason that Amherst Planning Board should not approve any more projects like this until the infrastructure is upgraded to, you know, then I, I'm not sure that what the accuracy is of this idea that, not that that caused the fire, but that the response was made more difficult because of limited water availability, I guess. Nate, you probably know much more about that than I do, but it was just interesting overlapping as we're considering this overlay and all of the infrastructure concerns that were raised and that we're aware of. So again, I think that does need to be handled or proposed sort of in parallel, at least addressed out loud or in writing with the overlay. Yeah, Angus, go ahead.
Well, I guess one question is, before I get to my question, I mean Nate, is there anything to share about that, that, that we should be thinking about?
No, I, I, you know, I don't have much more than what's been, you know, available online or in the news. I think, you know, there's, I mean, there's a few things, right? There's the kind of public infrastructure and then there's also like fire and building code. And you know, what could be done on a structure, you know, structure by structure. So I think there's a combination of factors. And I don't, you know, I think that if we, you know, keep the overlay or other parts of town moving forward, I don't, I think that's, I think it's, you know, we always ask about what's the water and sewer capacity. I don't think, you know, and then there's flow tests and stuff. So I don't think, I don't think it should stop, you know, preclude any ideas. And maybe that's something we have to consider. You know, if, if North Amherst or certain areas are getting developed, is it like, you know, do we need a, you know, what, like what is there necessary to make? You know, we have to upgrade the sewer, for instance. I've been told that water is fine. So, but is, you know, like, is there like a type of pump station or some sub-service station that is needed? I don't know, but I don't, I think that's something to investigate if this moves along.
Yeah.
Um, I guess my, my question then is to Jesse, you and Bruce about, you mentioned that there is going to be some opposition. I mean, the, the general tenor of the meeting, was there a lot of skepticism, concern? I mean, was there any positive kind of reception to it? Or, you know, I guess I'm kind of asking that, that kind of broader question. It doesn't sound like apart from the one person Bruce mentioned, there were a ton of people really throwing, you know, catastrophic sort of, or catastrophizing, but, but I guess I'm just curious about the overall tenor.
I'll comment on that in a second and Bruce, you get in. I did want to point out, I do see now we have one person in the attendees, Russell Isabel Dale. So hello, Russell, if you'd like to participate in the conversation, just raise your hand. We have not done public comment in this meeting. I don't know Nate, if that's a requirement of the way our meetings are supposed to run?
Yeah, it's at the, it's at the end of the agenda, but you know, we can take it as, you know, like you said, if as needed, yeah.
So Russell, you'll have a chance later if you want, or again, just raise your hand if you'd like to join the conversation. The meeting, Fred, I see your hand, we'll get to you in a sec. It, it was mostly negative, but not like pointed, not.
Not stridently so.
antagonistically negative.
Yeah.
There were very few people who were like, oh, this is a good idea. Let's explore it, if any, maybe.
The, the good idea that was applauded was that we were there talking at the stage of the.
Correct.
That was universally appreciated, except by, but Meg Gage made a point which got applause. The meeting was noteworthy that it wasn't dominated by people applauding or, or cheering or any of that sort of thing, except in one instance. And it was essentially, and Meg's a very close, I mean lifelong friend, I've known her for more than half of my life, very, very well. But she had what I would characterize as a, as a NIMBY reaction. And it wasn't a NIMBY reaction about in my backyard, it was a NIMBY in my part of town. Basically, she said that it looked to us as though, it looked to her as though what we were doing was thinking of, not about what was good for North Amherst, but what was good for the town. And by implication, what was good for the, the southern part of the town that would like to see its problems solved by the northern part of the town. And the reason that that got applause, of course, was because that's a strongly held feeling at this end of town. So that is the, probably the summary event that is the, I think the most indicative of the truth of what you say, Jesse, is that this will be difficult, but I don't think it's the reason not to do it. I think we have to be shown to have been frustrated in our attempts to, to do what we believe is the right thing for the town. And I think that your suggestion, Jesse, in our board meeting of moving this forward in parallel with the 40Y initiative. And I think we all put our fingers up for that, but I think that is a colossally good idea that would, if, if, if this is going to be successful, it's going to be successful because people can see the good of the town over their backyard interests. And, and so somehow or other, that's the task. And I think your suggestion is the best, most potent suggestion we've had to date that would make that persuasion, that persuasive challenge possibly successful.
Um, the other thing I would add, my thought of the resistance is also because of the district one counselors, or at least the one counselor who's still the counselor, who is, has voiced both at this subcommittee and at the meeting and an emails to me, very clear opposition to even touching it. And her position has been, let's get into one of the comments I made the other night. Her position is sort of like, why would you eliminate all this, what she calls affordable housing, which is the wrong word. But she's claiming it's great the way it is. It's beautiful. It's well established. There's affordable rents there. So why would we touch it? It seems to be her main premise. So, yes. Fred, please.
Yeah, I, this is connected to infrastructure. I mentioned this at the planning board meeting about the, an engineering study that I had seen as I was headed out the door into retirement as the electrical division supervisor at the DPW, an engineering study of the North Amherst intersection. And because I think a lot of the political opposition to the overlay is relative to fear about what's going to happen in terms of even further congestion on Meadow Street. And I know this engineering study is, has been done. I went down to the DPW on Friday and I spoke at length with Jason Skeels, who's the head engineer down there, and he remembered the study as well. And he went and, and looked for it. He couldn't find it in his files. He was pretty sure that Guilford had a copy of it. I called down there shortly before this meeting. I was unable to make a, a second connection with him. But yeah, as, as soon as possible, I, I will try, I, I think I can get a copy of this and Nate, I'll, I'll have it sent to you. And because it is a fascinating study. It is, it involves significant realignments of, and connections at the North Amherst intersection part of town. To some extent, the library expansion may have complicated it to some degree. This is something we have to look at. But if, if, if this, you know, and, and nothing ever came of this study, really. I think there was some rejiggering of the timing on the traffic lights, but very little came of it. But maybe this is the time to, to curiously take another look at it.
Thanks Fred. Angus, just hands up.
Yeah, I was just, I just wanted to add in response to, to what Bruce said and, and thinking about, you know, Kathy's opposition. You know, I, as someone who lives in South Amherst, I, I fully support trying to think of ways to increase density down in South Amherst, to increase affordable housing down there. I'd love at some point to talk about the aquifer recharge protection now that sewer and water has been extended to parts of, you know, South Amherst. I think we could actually consider removing some of those protections and which would allow for greater density. But I think it's also important for us to note that, that there is never going to be as much interest from students to live, especially off arterial roads with no bus service in places like far south Amherst. I think we can look at these, this is why I like the idea of the 40Y and thinking about other kinds of housing, right? For probably non-students for families. And I think that's a great idea. But, but this is why I think it's so useful for us to think about this multi-pronged strategy that's targeting different segments of housing needs across town from students to affordable housing for year-long, year-round residence, to starter homes for families, to AUs for, you know, elderly family members or, or other kinds of family situations. Like that whole spectrum is part of, to me, what, what we should be looking at. And so I think that this is, this is great and I'm excited for what we're about to do.
Great. Thanks Angus. Maybe that's a good way to shift gears and I was going to say this later, but thank you Bruce for supporting my thought on parallel work we should do. Actually now I think we need to do three things at once, which is the overlay, find a 40Y spot and consider the major arterial zoning change. And again, that package of things, who's going to complain, right? Whenever it's going to complain because it's going to affect everybody. And so, but it merely makes the point that we are looking expansively and trying to solve what we see as a problem. But we can only do what we can do. Um, so unless there's more discussion, yeah, go ahead Bruce.
Just a moment. I, I think you're right Kathy's, Kathy Shane's critique of, of the value of the existing housing at Puffton is a strong part of her concern, if, if not outright opposition. I mean, it does include the concerns about excessive boisterousness and neighborhood disruption and also in traffic. But she, she has, I think, focused at the moment on, on the value of what she sees as the small A affordable housing at Puffton. Because that isn't the knee jerk reaction of everybody else. There's every, most everybody else in up this end of town will, will think of the blony blowouts as the reason why you don't want to make more students happen here. And, and traffic intersection congestion at North Amherst is, is the second. And that's a kind of a, something that just is residual in the local DNA, if you like, in terms of residual opposition to these kind of things. But it's clear that this is the place to put this kind of housing. And it's also clear to me, as I said at the introduction to that meeting in North Amherst, that if you look at how other towns like us in around the country are dealing with this problem, most of them are solving it this way, not with minimum distribution type legislations and, and not by successfully imposing their will upon the institution to build more housing on campus. So we are doing what most towns who have our problem or have our situation are doing. And they're doing it where the higher density housing is actually going to work for students like we're trying to do. So there's a very strong argument for what we're trying to do from a logical point of view and from the case studies of other towns like Amherst around the country. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a solid argument that should be compelling. But the, 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 Kathy's argument or observation of the, that we are diminishing of, that we're going to end up with more costly housing as a consequence, is something we really should think about how we, how we deal with. And we deal with it maybe by thinking she's right and saying, well, it's a problem and maybe that's the reason not to do. But maybe she's not right, or maybe that she's not right in the longer term. I mean, I think it's something, I think the conundrum that she points out with the housing, particularly at Puffton. And Puffton's is, is a, is a good, solid example. So I think somehow we should figure out what and how that should or would play out. I mean, it's, if, 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 if we were to accept her argument, you would never build anything new. Because the new stuff is always going to be more expensive than the existing stuff. So clearly, at one level, the argument is fatally flawed because it basically says no to any progress. So I'd like to explore that for our own good so that we can understand and deal with what appears to be a powerful and logical critique of what we're intending to do. So I just wanted to put that as a, as a, as a thought exercises for everybody, not just us, for, for the town as a whole. Why is it in the long-term interests of the town to do what is in the, in the short term, perhaps not that logical? Why should we do this in the face of that apparent short-term impairment?
Sure. I mean, I think we could easily have four or five bullet points, but in 20 seconds we could list those, I think, but we're preaching choir here. Yeah, Angus, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, I, I think two things that I, I think are worthwhile to point out, which is one, you know, we've looked at some of the rents of Puffton Village, they're not, it is true that they are more affordable than some newer units that have been built in town, but they're not particularly low. I mean, I'm, I'm looking at a two-bedroom right now that's listing for 2,200 a month. That's a thousand dollars a bedroom, which is pretty consistent with newer construction.
Anecdotally, I would add, I mean, I've heard now three stories where they basically double charge. Again, I don't know how the leases are working, but I've heard of two, two bedrooms that have four people in them, each paying like 800. So whatever's on the website is one thing, and then whatever actually happens is another thing.
Yeah. And then the other thing I just pointed out is what Jera hopefully noted in our last discussion, which is this, any new construction would either require an in-lu payment to the housing trust or would actually provide affordable housing, which, you know, is, it would be more of, a lot more affordable than what's currently offered at, at Puffton, which is closer to market rate housing.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at Kathy's thing that she passed out at the meeting. And she, for example, says that the one-bedroom apartment at Puffton is a thousand 25 dollars a month. And the equivalent apartments at East Pleasant Street in, in basically downtown and the Fieldstones are, are double that. So she's seen that in her data that there's a hundred percent difference in the rents between Puffton and, and new, and, and what she would say would be the, what the newer housing. Now, I did a similar study, but I compared it to the apartments in, in North Square. I didn't find that there was a hundred percent markup between the two. I found that it was about 30. So I think we need to, one of the steps in, in addressing this is to, is to dig deeper into the data because Kathy did what she thinks is a, is a deliberative study. And she gets a hundred percent differential and I did what I think is a deliberative study and I get the 30%. So there's a big difference between those two, even though they both conclude that the newer housing will be more expensive. But there's a big difference between a hundred percent more expensive and 30% more expensive.
I've seen this, I haven't really looked here. I know for a fact, at least a while ago, not in Amherst, when I was looking for rentals, well, a strategy that happens is something's posted on the website as the lowest possible unit. Like, oh yeah, maybe there's one, one bedroom there for a thousand dollars, but then you go and you show up and you look around and most of the one bedrooms are 1,500. So.
Yes.
You know, none of that information is public as far as I know. So I think without talking directly to the manager, which they might be interested in doing, and really asking, okay, what's the average price of your one bedroom? What's the average price of your two bedroom? That's the data we really need. But it might be really difficult to get accurately, if, if we want to go down that road of trying to make that argument. Which again, I'm not sure is, we can spend a lot of time that way. I don't, I personally, I don't feel like that's necessarily that useful. I think what is useful is constantly clarifying what we're talking about with these words affordable or lower rent and like being really careful around that. Because obviously anybody says, oh, why are you going to demolish 50 affordable units? That raises flags for a lot of people inaccurately.
And it was pointed out as well that, that we are actually creating a 12% capital A affordable. So the, that's another part of the argument you just, because at the moment that Puffton housing has no capital A affordable housing, as I recall. And what we are proposing would get 12%.
Yep.
So, and maybe we could get a little more if it's, if, if, if we, if, if we look closely at the numbers and find out what, what the interests are and so forth, but 12 at least.
Um, I think we should shift gears and I'm going to give us 25 minutes, I think, to talk about next steps for this overlay. And then I think we should have 25 minutes for thinking about 40Y, really the next agenda around just general zoning priorities and stuff. Maybe we can look at the map and talk about possibilities for that today, if that sounds okay to everybody. Yeah, let's, let's do that. So maybe Nate, you want to start, just tell us what you think next steps are for the overlay.
For North Amherst?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, yeah, some of my questions would be like, you know, what is, you know, what are the boundaries? Are we still good with that, you know, relative density? And, you know, what are, you know, kind of going back to that general framework of like, what's the purpose? And, you know, is it student housing or is it just market, you know, like a market housing that could, that has affordable? You know, are we using some of our general use classifications in our zoning bylaw now, right? So we have our, you know, we define a few different types of multi-unit buildings or residential uses. And so kind of looking at that and, yeah, yeah, it's interesting. I, when you look at the map, I think this is still a really good place. I agree. There's a lot of people that have, you know, different opinions about it. So I don't know, I guess, you know, some of it would be, well, you know, we had a target density. But we didn't really, you know, we had taller buildings and different things. I, I don't know, do we rethink what is the right density or right number? Do we have to get a little bit more prescriptive in terms of certain standards? You know, kind of to the point of like crowd control, right? So sometimes like kind of filling out that framework and having some ideas about some of these things. And maybe we give ourselves, I, I think for all of these, do we have a timeline? Like, would we say by April 1, we want to have something moving forward or not, right? So we, we give ourselves, you know, that time to look at a few different strategies, zoning strategies, like the others. We discussed whether it's 40Y or on different streets. And, you know, we can work diligently at it and have some other meetings, talk to the planning board and staff. And we can, you know, and, and just see what happens. Like I said, I think it'd be great to try to get a few things to counsel next spring, staff and, you know, the subcommittee generated ideas. So.
That sounds like a good idea. What if we, what if we go for March 1? Because nothing ever goes quite on time and then we still have a possibility of spring to counsel. I had a couple sort of twists on our current idea, I would share just about the North Amherst overlay. I think the boundaries, I don't see a reason to really change them. I did start thinking about the affordable unit clustering versus not. And I, I've kind of a hybrid idea and I don't know if it gets too complicated to be this prescriptive. Uh, but I reacted to something you said Nate, I do think the focus. Uh, but, but reacting to something you said, Nate, I do think the focus should be student housing. Like, I don't think we need to be shy about that. That's the real problem. But I also realized we may have an opportunity here. Because what we've already been talking about, right, is, is lower, maybe three-story with frontage or with North Pleasant, you know, for some amount of distance, and then you can get higher, right? And what if we said, okay, the affordable units, twelve percent actually affordable, need to be in that front section, but still a mix in the lower height restricted area? Because that allows potentially for more, some family style or professional style rental that might be attractive before you move back to the west to get into the higher density, really student geared housing. And that way, we're not saying, yes, you should cluster all the affordable units. I think it's still big enough where you would have a mix even at twelve percent in that front. If it's whatever, I don't remember the distance we had decided. But it could get around some of those concerns and be sort of a, a mix of, you know, hybrid version of what we've been talking about. Um, I don't think, I don't think we need to have a stated density. I think we should, you should just set the maximum, and that way it's really up the maximum heights or whatever we're gonna come up with and make it continually stress. It's really up to the developer to figure out what's gonna work. Even though we have this, we're working on this idea that three X is what makes it feasible economically. I don't, I don't think we're really the right people to answer that. Yeah, Bruce, go ahead.
I think, I'd be, I, 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 I still think that we should, the overlay, the wording of our overlay should encourage a mutually supportive community opportunity for the affordable housing component. And I think that because we want to be not shy about targeting that the bulk of the housing be targeted, be aimed at students. Therefore, I think there's going to be a difference between the, the, the neighborhood interests and the neighborhood experiences of the people who are living there multi-year and the people who are living there year to year. I, I think, I currently think that we should even figure out a way to require something like uh, street addresses for the affordable housing. In other words, because it's a, because we're trying to establish viable neighborhoods there. I think that seemed to be the experience certainly through the sixties and through the seventies and eighties. When I was in London, I saw the way in which housing, council housing transformed from the project apartment-sized houses to these more cleverly, intensively designed housing blocks that gave essentially street addresses to all units. And it was, it was a big shift in the look of, 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 of these, of the housing that was built in the sixties and seventies to the housing that was built in the late seventies and eighties. There was this shift that basically recognized that putting people up in blocks where they couldn't say, that's my house, was a, a negative to making people feel comfortably located in a, in a place in, in a city. So I think that we should think about how we can require the development of, of, that's, I'm, I'm calling it street-addressed houses or housing dwelling units with street addresses. There might be a, a better term or a different term. But essentially, it's, it's housing that has identity versus housing that doesn't have individual identity. And I think that because we've got two very particular and very different housing markets or market, uh, housing groups, that, that they, we should recognize that they have very different needs, that they will have developed very different lifestyles, and that we should address that in the overlay.
Then we could also go maybe as far as saying, okay, we want cottage-style development on the East Pleasant. And then we want apartments as you move west, right?
Yes, it becomes more difficult because the, the parcels maybe develop one at a time. And so we can't regulate that what happens in Puffton be solved on.
But, but I mean, they're big enough that you could, you'd have many, potentially many units on the street before you get back, right?
Yes, but, but recognizing that the developments are likely to be parcel by parcel rather than someone doing it. But I, I think it's, I think it's important to the success, and it's important to us being able to argue that we are replacing some of the units that are currently affordable at Puffton with real affordable units. And also that those are places where inhabitants can create real communities. And we, and, and the physical structure of, of, of the, of what happens is going to support that. And, and we should begin to prescribe how that happens in the bylaw. We stated with a probably a preamble, a vision statement, a goal statement, where we, 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 we write this in a few, you know, two or three paragraphs so that it's, so that we've got a, a clear intention statement, a clear recognition of, of what's, what we think will happen there. And then we can follow that with particular provisions within the wording of the bylaw, of the overlay bylaw.
Angus.
I have a question, and then I guess a couple of comments in response to that. The question is, can students qualify as low income for the purposes of affordable housing?
Uh, it's very difficult, but they can. So typically with like, you know, the capital A affordable units, they, if they meet certain criteria, so, you know, so many years not being independent, all these other things. But typically, an undergraduate student is very difficult to be considered as for an affordable unit.
Okay, that's helpful to know. And then I, I guess another question I have, the University Drive prop, building project that we approved earlier. Those affordable units are just part of the apartment complex, correct? So I guess, I guess one of the, I, I hear what y'all are saying, and I think there's a lot of merit to it. At the same time, I guess I want to register some concern that, one, we'd be making the overlay more complicated, which is okay. I mean, like, we, we can do that. It's not like an overlay needs to be simple. It's already more complicated than the University Drive one. But it's a more complicated part of town that we need to, you know, consider more things. I guess the concern that I would have is what, what y'all are proposing would make the affordable units even more expensive than they already are going to be for a developer. Um, I mean, including them in a building as part of the plan is cheaper than standalone, separate street address housing in a cottage style. And so what, what we are doing is, is raising the cost of any development here by doing that, which, which might be okay, but affordable units, including affordable units already makes it harder for developers. So I guess one, one question that I wonder is, and I'd love to hear y'all's, y'all's thoughts in, in response to this concern. But I guess I'm wondering if there's a possibility of having some kind of a vision statement as Bruce is talking about, but not actually requiring it. If there's kind of a, because I mean, any, and any projects here are gonna have to come before the planning board. We'll be able to approve them, and if they don't meet the goals that we're really wanting from this, then we wouldn't have to approve them. I mean, I, I presume, we're not planning on making this, you know, by just a building permit. So anyway, I guess, I guess I'm just wondering if there's ways to both set our vision and give some options without requiring something which could actually make, be cost prohibitive for any development to happen.
Sure, good point. Bruce, before you go, I just want to point out, we now have two official people in our participants, attendees. So Andrew Churchill and Janet Keller are in the audience. Hello to you both. At this meeting, you're free to raise your hand and participate in the conversation if you'd like. So feel free to jump in. Go ahead, Bruce.
Angus, I think that's, that's a nicely crafted trajectory between what I was advocating and what might be the art of the possible, because I think you're right. What I said would at first lunch probably appear to be a more expensive way of doing things, I think unequivocally. So, so I think you're right. I think having a clear statement about what we would, what we would like to see happen and why, essentially building it on the recognition that we've got one class of, one class of residents who are temperamental, ephemeral, transitory is the word I'm looking for, and another class of them not. And what that means and, and how we think a successful development could reconcile that. I think that would be good. And then we, we could contemplate whether we do more than that. But I think you're right, whatever we do, we should be mindful of not overtly or not obviously and unreasonably adding cost. Because what we would like to do is to have a creative design response to a goal statement, a programmatic objective, a design objective, and not a stipulative edict. So I, I think that was well stated.
Angus.
Well, I was just gonna add one other thing, which is, you know, we're, we're also thinking of, of, you know, spreading out inclusive, affordable units or right clustering them. It's possible that under the clustering option, which is not normally allowed, right, we could specify that if you want to cluster the units, they need to be clustered and separated. I mean, I think there's, there's a way maybe to do something there to make it clear, to, to make some kind of a delineation without being overly prescriptive about what that separation might look like. But I don't know, that's something that I'm thinking of, another way to kind of.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking about, about defining the front zone, whatever we call it, as that's where the affordable units should go, not in the higher density, because then you'd get a mix of some affordable, some regular rentals, but maybe with that different style or, you know, not that they all have to be right next to each other, is my point. And it might be nicer if they're not, with a little interest burst with other, but I, I don't know. On it, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, while the conversation was going on, I, I just drew, you know, a line five hundred feet back from North Pleasant along Puffton and said, okay, so say if we did have this area, you know, so many feet back from the street, what does that look like? And so it's, you know, it's twelve acres of where we'd have the lower density affordable units. And that still leaves a majority of the property to be developed at a different density. And so to me, if we were having kind of this statement, which I like in the beginning, I'd want to have some supportive dimensional standards or something in the bylaw. And so, you know, I don't, you know, and maybe it's just that, it's kind of this, I can share the screen quickly. It's, um,
Why are you doing that, Nate? When you say twelve versus the, you're just talking about the, the Puffton trajectory. Yes, I see it.
Yeah, so just, you know, the two properties in the front, but this area is twelve acres, and it still leaves all of this to, to be developed a other way. And so, you know, if my, my estimate was if there was a hundred, if this were redeveloped with eight hundred units, you know, we need about a hundred here, you know, on twelve, hundred units on twelve acres seems pretty reasonable. It's different than what's, you know, there now, but, you know, I'm trying to, you know, right, trying to get to maybe some kind of dimensional standard or performance standard that we'd have in there without being overly prescriptive. But, you know, otherwise, we would just, we could leave it as it is and just have it be dispersed. Or we try to be intentional about having maybe some different design criteria here. And I'm okay if it's a little different or more expensive. I think, you know, what we're, what we're providing is an opportunity for, you know, much greater return over a longer term. So if there needs to be a little more forethought here, I'm okay with that. Middlebury is doing something similar up in Vermont where they, you know, have some properties, and they said, here's where we want the affordable units. And the rest on this project can be market rate. And so they had kind of a similar idea of having a cluster, different style development versus what's happening in the back of a property.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah, just so we know that forty units an acre is an intense urban development, but still one that has been able to be, so there's, so twelve acres for a hundred units is obviously a, a, a very, a very low density by urban standards.
So in terms of nailing this down a little more, I mean, Nate, do you have the bandwidth to present us with some things next, next time so we can start discussing details? Or like, do you want us to go through some general more discussion with this group first? I was also wondering, are there, uh, similar to what we did with University Drive at some point? Can we assemble a series of, you know, essentially images from other similar places to start to talk about what we might be imagining? And then layer on top of that, are there resources that we have or can get around the crowd management design type things? Like, that hasn't entered our space as far as I've been on planning board yet, but seems like it should for this project.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to, you know, I don't want to say assigned tasks, but assigned tasks, you know. So it's like, is, you know, could the housing subcommittee look at, right, those, like, is it three things? You know, the kind of environmental design, safety aspect. You know, Bruce has already done some research on other communities. So just, is it refreshing that and looking at kind of their strategies and what they did? I think that's some nice background information. Like I said, it, it supports this. And even the idea of clustering affordable units or, or however you want to phrase it, but, you know, I think that'd be great for the subcommittee and, you know, or, you know, I think there's other things. I think actually trying to get the framework filled out a little bit for this and getting some, you know, more language on paper to be reviewed, it's easier to get that, you know, for people to respond to that. And so I, I could do that. But yeah, like the subcommittee to take on some tasks, because your staff will be working on a few other zoning amendments as well.
Okay, Bruce, go ahead.
Did, I, I gave a, a short introduction before Doug gave a longer introduction to the North Amherst Library meeting. And the short introduction was the big picture situation about what the strategic solution concepts that fans like Amist were pursuing. And I wrote that down and, but I, I think, Nate, did I send that to you or did I just send it to Doug? Because I'm pretty sure I haven't sent it to anybody else.
I, I may have a draft of it, but I've, please send it again. Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll send it to, to your, I think I can do that.
Yeah.
But it was, it was, it was, you know, something like the big, I could, I could also write down a, perhaps a, a draft of a, what might be a paragraph, an introductory paragraph to what we've been, what Angus was suggesting is rewrite. I could, I could, I could make my contribution to that too, so I could, I could take that on in the, in the coming week.
Great. I'm happy to do some of the work. I guess I don't even know where to start with some of it though, in terms of like looking around for other standards and whatnot.
Yeah, let me, I can, yeah, I'll, I can send some things out. I know it's really interesting. There's the International Town Gown Committee. And they have some webinars and forums. They, I'm not sure how much they post online. And then, you know, some of it would be looking at maybe what, if, you know, Bruce had a number of communities. I think maybe even just going back to those and seeing like, okay, well, like, what is, you know, like UC Boulder or that community, or what is, you know, Ithaca? I don't know, Bruce, I think you've had some others that may have been even more.
Yes, I didn't have Boulder because Boulder's much bigger than us.
It is.
And, but, so I tried to keep them in scale and so forth. And there's probably, I mean, I, I haven't, I have, I, I identified fifteen, and I've only spoken to seven or eight. So there's still another, you know, half dozen or more that I haven't yet got to.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I, yeah, sorry, I think with this overlay, for instance, we could have a, within the purpose. And if we have statements like, you know, having safe design, you know, I was looking at communities that require a pre-submital meeting with staff. So to me, in, in this overlay, we'd require that, and we could say you have to have three concept plans or whatever we want, and we could have, you know, certain loose criteria that they have to meet that we could then assess it. So like, are you, you know, are they creating spaces that are, you know, not great in terms of crowd control? And, you know, are there other things that could be done? And so the idea would be to, you know, we have some of these statements, and then we, you know, there's this pre-submital review where some of it can get, be discussed. And so, yeah, I think it's really hard to say what exactly that means. Like, you know, you don't want to say like, it's twenty, you know, you can't have a space that's four hundred by this dimension. Or maybe you do or something, I don't know. But to me, it would be get at some of that language, and we put it in here, and we see what it looks like as part of a zoning article.
Okay. Okay, by my clock, we're just about out of time for this topic. I have one more question. So I was, I was thinking a lot about the traffic issue. And really, it's just, I think, a question for you, Nate. Is. Does UMass, does UMass land treated with all the same regulations? Meaning if, for example, if they wanted to. Make a connection to 116 somewhere else. They contend with all the same wetland committee, you know, state issues that the town would?
Yeah, so they, you know, they're, I don't want to say they're exempt, but in the ED zone, you know, they. I'll say, you know, they have some immunity from town zoning, but in terms of wetlands or other impacts, they're not. So like, if they were to go through wetlands, they still have. You know, local and some state jurisdictional. You know, in terms of like planning, it's different. So, you know, if they wanted to have, you know, anything in their, on their. Campus in the educational zone, we don't really have standards. Some communities have different ideas around that, but I. The difference is also it's as a state university. So, you know, private institutions like Hampshire or Amherst are different than even UMass. So.
Just, just to throw it out there when you're all looking at a map next, that's so obvious to me, the connect governor's drive straight. Through to 116 would solve a lot of this. Issue around Meadow Street and that intersection, I think. I'm not a traffic engineer, but it seems so obvious to me.
Yes, I agree. Something like that seems.
Bruce, did you just put up your hand again?
Yes, because I was thinking we're heading towards the end and I I would, I would personally like a lobby for. A discussion of the 40Y. Because I think that what you and Angus have suggested, which is that these we do are some kind of a parallel track thing so that we can see that there are. Initiatives for family housing, perhaps in south of town versus initiatives for student housing predominantly, even the north of town that we can, we can. We can, we can carry those forward together. So I would. Like to know more about the what 40Y is and and. Or what it is and what what potential it might, our town might offer.
Yeah, I was.
Pretty ignorant about that right now.
Um, maybe that's a, maybe that's sort of agenda item four and five at the same time. Maybe we can start a discussion now about 40Y. And maybe that can start with, I'm guessing that you're the most knowledgeable among us, like, what are the big requirements? And then maybe one or two of us can be tasked with over the next couple of weeks, looking at maps and trying to think about if. Where we can identify spots that might meet these requirements, unless that's like, it's already been done, Nate, and it's more simple than. I think it is.
Now, I I just forwarded you a few attachments from Mansfield, Mass. You know, they're trying to vote it at their Fall Town Meeting. You know, I think there's. You know, it's considered a starter home overlay from the state. They have, you know, certain requirements, you know, I think there's some drawbacks to it. I don't, you know, staff hasn't looked at. Where in town, I think. You know, to me, it's almost like this allows for a traditional, you know, almost neighborhood development where it's smaller lots and. You know, I want to change, like I think I mentioned at the planning board, our street standards and subdivisions, so you could have narrower streets. Maybe no sidewalks or sidewalk on one side and. And it doesn't have to even be that big. So, you know, Mansfield and other communities, I think, are. Looking at it on bigger properties, but maybe this is also appropriate. As a. Along certain streets or it could be, you know, to a depth along certain streets or even just, you know, a floating overlay. You know, it could be like, you know, for instance, municipal properties around town or certain properties in these zones and. You know, I think the discussion is. Would be like, what do we? Think is a good. You know, Doug had said that, you know, if we had smaller lots and we allow zero lot lines, safer. Townhouses or something where it's almost like a fee simple. That's the idea here. Does that encourage a different type of owner or user than? Like a multi-unit building? And so. You know, they cap the number of the size of a dwelling at 1800 and like 54 square feet. It has to be, you know, so many bedrooms and it can be smaller. I don't know that much about it, to be honest. I, you know, staff and I, we just started talking about it as well. You know, this housing production plan mentioned it. And I guess we even, you know, I guess some of what we've been talking about is like, right, what is? The idea is that to create new kind of subdivisions or could it be used to develop? A new kind of development method in certain neighborhoods. So instead of having just like, you know, acre zoning or two acre zoning or half acre zoning, could you do? 8000 square foot lots? And have them side by side and allow, okay, this could be. Single for small, single family homes, or we could allow, you know, townhouses with zero lot lines as fee simple. And so, you know, I think there's that flexibility. I don't. You know, and there's some affordability requirement. I, yeah, I haven't. You know, there's other ways you could do it too. Like, you know, there's. Like Bruce, you know, we've talked about cohousing or open space conservation development. Plan unit residential development. There's all these different development methods. Whether or not it's different properties or it's all one property. And I think 40Y, I think that is, it's allows really small properties to be have a fee simple.
But essentially, it's whether it's frontage driven or not. Subdivision is frontage, the others are not frontage. And I think we, that's a, that's a point of entry.
Yeah. So I think we have to, you know, I. And I haven't, I don't know enough of like, what's the best approach, you know, right? Because otherwise we have to consider what already is frontage. Or are we allowing kind of like a condominium approach, you know, so you can have, you know, 10 units on this, 10 units an acre. Like a cottage style development.
So the other night, actually, I have a plan board. I found my way to the state description of the 40Y. They have a PDF also. But but I got a little confused thinking about how we might apply it because. Okay, so can we, so we set an area, but there's lots of existing parcels in there. That just gives each owner the option to pursue that. Because then you get these tiny little slivers.
Right.
Where maybe you end up with. Six houses on us, what was a single family lot, right? But then, I mean, do they have to be done in concert or can it work that way? Where it's like, you're just giving the option and sort of infilling. As the developer wants to, as the owner wants to.
Yeah, no, I think, right, I think the idea is hopefully it would be. It can be done, you know. You can't compel someone to combine properties. And so, right, it could just be this property by property development, or if the density or something is. Enough incentive, would a developer aggregate a few properties? But, you know, I think we're, you know, like in Mansfield, they had these three big properties and they said, oh, let's make an overlay here. And so that's the benefit of it. If you had like, oh, you know, you had a 50 acre property.
So so maybe that's the, one of the exercises we need to do is look around town and see where there might be. Those kinds of opportunities. I'm not sure there's anywhere, but maybe there is.
Right, right, right. Or, you know, it's like, or if you said along these arterial streets to a depth of 300 feet. We'd like to do a 40Y overlay. So like, you know, on these sections of, say.
That's kind of what I was thinking through, but then I got stuck thinking about. Oh, well, person A, owner A wants to, and then B, C, D doesn't, and then owner E does. Is that okay? Or does that break the? Rule, the law that's required? I just don't know.
Right, right, right. And then you, you know, right, you'd almost have to like do mockups of like, what does that mean? For actual. Development, is that?
Angus, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand. So this is. I guess help me understand based on what you understand, Nate, that. This is not an overlay. This would be changing zoning for a given area. Because it seemed, I mean, the way I've not seen the language of overlay in any of these documents that I'm seeing from the state, but.
Yeah, I was. I was considering it an overlay, but maybe you're. I, yeah, like I said, I haven't researched it enough.
All right, maybe, maybe we should. Again, I'm happy to spend some time reading the state. Description. Angus, maybe you want to do that with me? We come back prepared for our next meeting and. Discuss.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm seeing some overlay language, but it's not clear to me.
Right.
So so Nate, Mansfield's considering it. Do we know other places that have done it? That might give us some guidance too? Or is this, is this a new thing? I don't, I mean, I'm so very ignorant about it.
It's pretty, you know, it is pretty new. I think, you know, some of it was looking at almost, you know, to me, it's like, you know, someone looked at. A bunch of communities and said, oh, these are the neighborhoods people like. How can we, how, how does, how can we get zoning to fit, right? And in so many places, the zoning doesn't allow that kind of development anymore. Right. So if we, yeah, I I think that's the, that's. My idea for it is, you know, there's someone's like, oh, like, why can't we allow small lots and?
Okay, so then, so then the assignment is to really figure out what are the requirements and limits potentially? For you, why? So to sort of get a handle on that so that we can intelligently think about our talent and where it might fit.
I mean, I guess another question that I have about this is. Obviously, 40Y opens up more options also, but it also creates more restrictions because it seems like there's income. Requirements, right? I mean, there's, there's a way they're trying to force it to be a starter home, which they're doing through income caps.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess another option would be to think about. Changing lot sizes for some of our residential areas, right? I mean, or lot coverage, like. There's maybe different ways to think about that too, that wouldn't be 40Y if this 40Y thing doesn't. Pan out.
Correct.
But that's just, that's obviously paying with a much broader brush.
Yes, and that's the broader brush that I mentioned as the third problem, I think, might want to think about. But yeah, I I think there are separate and accomplish different things. Like I would imagine if we relax the lot size or the coverage or try to encourage. Townhomes or whatever we're going to call them, whatever standards we come up with. That's really, you know, giving opportunities to developers similar to an overlay, right? Not trying to figure out who's going to live there or get a particular income range or starter homes, et cetera, just allowing different kind of density.
Right. Yeah, I think. You know, the state has different tools, you know, they have a 40R, you know, like 40Y, you know, 43D. And so some of it is. You know, we don't, sometimes we don't adopt those and communities don't because they can achieve it some other way. But maybe this is a good starting point and. And is it, you know, is it necessary? I agree. It's almost like if we said, oh. In the RVC, we will now make these three changes. Is that enough of a, you know? Like if we allowed townhouses by site plan review. And we change lot sizes and something else. Or what, you know, for example, is that? Can that achieve a similar? Similar outcome?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so homework on 40Y. I'm up for that.
All right. Yeah, I mean, no, me too. I've been meaning to. I. I was looking at Mansfield. I was just, I was really. You know, to me, it's like there, it's a project based thing they're doing. They have this opportunity, like I think I shared the screen that you can get 80 units instead of like eight, right?
Yeah. So actually, maybe, maybe now is a good time. We could spend a couple of minutes on just calendar dates. Because then we can pick another discussion for 40Y and that'll help me put things on my calendar. So I do the, do my homework. And then we could come back to the. Larger discussion or the assignment task of the priorities.
We have to publicly comment or?
Not quite. So I sent you all an email just earlier. With some proposed dates. Are we able to just look at them now as a group and decide if they work? Or do people need more? Time to look at calendars and such?
I'm looking at mine right now. I can do it.
Yeah, I can do it now.
So we had previously decided to meet the day before Thanksgiving. I can still do that if you all are up for that. It's November 26th. Angus is making a face.
That doesn't, that doesn't work for me.
Okay. That's fine. I was just putting it out there because we was on our list. So then the next thing that made sense with planning board date was, I think, December 11th. I won't be able to make it, so I need the three of you to be able to make it.
Yeah, I can make that.
Okay, Fred and Bruce, that worked for you?
I can do that, yes, if you want to meet without you.
Nate, sorry.
I can make it.
What about, what if we did the 10th, Jesse, at the same time? Would that be better for?
No, I'm, I'm going to be in China. I'm leaving on the night. My, my kids there abroad and I'm going to meet her at the end of her program and travel a bit.
Cool.
Yeah, should be fun. But again, if the, if the rest of you can do the 10th, that's no objection for me.
Yeah, the 11th isn't great for me right now, but the 10th is good.
I'd have my daughter on the call and sometimes that works fine. Often it doesn't right now.
That'd be our next meeting then. So it would be.
Yeah.
I mean, would we meet sooner?
Let me see, because don't we have planning board? I mean, I was just trying to do alternate weeks for planning. We don't have to. It just felt like, I mean, I like you all, but it feels like a lot.
I mean, there's the week of December 1st.
Do we have plenty of board on the 3rd?
We do.
Yeah.
We do, but.
So yeah, I could do the 4th, Thursday, the 4th.
Good for me.
Yeah, it works for me.
At the same time, 11 to 12.
Good for me.
I put 11:31. Yeah, 11:31, that should work on the. Fourth, right?
Yep.
Okay. December 4th, Fred, does that work for you?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay. And then. So we're going to skip the week after. Sounds like that was a little tough. But then I think because of holidays, I had pushed us to January, although maybe now we want to think about. The week of the 17th, which is also when planning board is. But again, I can do that. Thursday, the 18th, maybe? Sorry, I can't do that. I, what I'm saying, the three of you could do it, maybe.
But 18th is good for me, December 18th.
Yeah, it works for me.
Okay.
All right. December 18th.
Same time, 11:30 to 1. And Bruce, you're going to chair both those meetings.
Okay. The one on the 4th and the one on the 18th.
Uh, no, sorry, I can be there for the 4th, 11:18 you're going to do.
Okay.
And then. Maybe if we get back on track with not planning board weeks. Because there's plenty of board on Wednesday, the 7th, right? Of January.
I think so, yeah.
I mean, I'm assuming we haven't seen next year's dates yet, right?
No, that should be going out soon. We were just finalizing. There was a few holidays we had to work around.
And I was assuming it's the first and the third Wednesday again, right?
Yeah.
So that's why I had put the 15th. 29th of January, 12th, 26th of February and so on.
You mean the 14th?
In January. Back to Thursdays for this meeting.
Oh, Thursdays, okay. That's what, Thursday, the 15th, I can manage.
Yeah.
Right. And then January 29th, Thursday.
Yeah.
Um. I. At 11:30?
Yes.
Yeah, that should, that should work. I teach until 11:20. Sometimes students talk to me, but I should be.
But also if we're all there and you come late, that's okay, you know.
Yeah, 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 I might be a few minutes late.
We, I was hoping, are we still on the 15th?
Correct. January 15th.
Yeah.
One. January 29th, 11:31. Then we're into. February, March. Again, I just did the second and fourth Thursdays. In February and March as well, which are the 12th and 26th in February. 12th and 26th in March. Just have a gander at your calendars. We can put those in for now unless anyone sees a conflict and then obviously.
I'm not going to be able to do the 12th of February.
Okay.
But I can do the 20. 6th.
Okay. Fred and Angus, the 12th of February, possible. And Nate, of course. I'm assuming you guys will say no if you're looking at things and you see conflicts.
Sorry, I'm trying to. Keep up.
Yeah.
What was the first one in February?
12th, Thursday, the 12th.
Yeah, I should be able to make both those February ones.
Okay.
Okay, so February 26th, yes, there we go, I see.
And then we're into March.
What's going on?
Same dates in March, 12th and 26th. Same dates, March twelfth and twenty sixth.
March twelfth, yeah.
And then I thought we'd reconsider after that.
So all of these that are eleven, oh, hold on, they're all at eleven thirty.
That's what I had.
Oh, okay. I'll go and change all of them then. Uh, it's just that today was eleven.
Right, generally eleven thirty to one is much better for.
So we, so December fourth was the first. Yes, that was the first one. Okay, I'll just go and change them all.
Okay, so it sounds like we're all in agreement for the next few months, which is great. So then December fourth is our next meeting. And yeah, I will, let's do a forty Y discussion then. About some, we could check a time for that. Well, maybe we could plan to have a, Angus and I can outline what we understand the requirements are. And maybe then, you know, I'll even try and look at a map and make some suggestions or whatnot. That'll be a, a good discussion for that. Uh, maybe that's also, Nate, if we're gonna take that on, maybe can you aim for December fourth to have some more specifics on the overlay? For us to think through.
Sure.
Great. I can look at some language for crowd control as well.
Great.
If that's something we're thinking about.
Yeah, I'll, I'll also try and spend some time looking at the other towns that Bruce identified just for standards or whatever they're, whatever, whatever else we can glean from them. Okay. Um. We had on our agenda general zoning priorities and revisions, some assignments and tasks. Maybe that was what this was. I don't know if there are other things that you wanted to move up to the top of our list that someone should give some attention to in the next month. Um, and then we were also just, you know, we always put on the agenda review and discuss other areas. But I think we're kind of doing that at the same time too, unless anyone has some burning thoughts they want to share. Don't see anyone. Okay. Then I guess now we can go for some public comment. Andrew Churchill and Janet Keller are still in the attendees. If either of you would like to. Out a comment, please raise your hand. Okay, I see Andrew Churchill would like to join in. So I'm giving you. Uh, ability to speak. Hello, Andrew.
Hi, I just wanted to say I appreciate the, the conversation and, um, I'm really interested in how we can. Resolve both, both our housing shortage and our revenue shortage. And I think the two walk hand in hand in, in a lot of ways. I also think that when you're talking about some of the, you talked about the overlay for the North Amherst area. And you talked about finding some, some pictures of what. Um, you know, the, the affordable housing by the road and market rate behind. If, if there are examples that are not too. Scary, I think that would be useful for people to see.
Great, thank you for that.
Thanks for your work.
Thanks. Okay, um.
Janet's there.
Yep, Janet, I'm gonna bring you over as well. Hi Janet, you should be able to unmute. So we can hear you.
Unmuted.
There you go.
Okay, I too, um, appreciate, uh, the conversation. And, um, I wonder if I could have. Be copied on the information you guys are getting. Um, would that be possible, Nate?
You know, I, I, I'm a little delayed putting, um, posting stuff online, but the Housing and Zoning Subcommittee has a page within the planning board. And so I post, I'll post stuff up there. That's the easiest way to do it. I'm not.
Yeah, that, that sounds great. Um, thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Make sure that Janet has the link.
Yeah, I, I've missed the last few meetings, but I can get that up there.
Okay, thanks.
Tell me if you need help in getting the link, because with the approval of the board, which you now have to have this material, if you're having trouble, just. I mean, you could call Nate, but Nate's a busy man and, and I'm less preoccupied. So. You can use me if you like as an, as an intermediary, if necessary, to help get you what you want or what we have. Um, because I think I have the authority of, of everybody to pass on stuff that sent to me to you. So that's another way.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's all public. So Bruce, you can forward it along.
Yeah, yeah, I thought so. I just, rather than have Janet calling you, uh, I'm trying to take load off you.
Thanks.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Great, thanks Janet. Okay, um, the other thing I was gonna just mention to you all, uh, there was another article in the Amherst Indy. Uh, which had to do with. Uh, sort of had to do with our conversation the other night in North Amherst, um, which is about. The roles we play and wear dual hats, UMass and planning board and such. You might want to check that out. I, I don't know if it'll come up at full board, but it might. I can send around the link to that.
Yes, yes, if you would send it.
Angus, go ahead.
Um, I was just gonna ask before we, because I think we're starting to kind of wind down, run out of time. I just wanted to ask the, we, uh. At the last planning board meeting, we all kind of prioritized some different items. And so, and then Nate, you forward around the. Uh, TOA plan zoning priorities. And I was wondering if, if it might help us just in our final few minutes, just to clean that up. A little bit. I know Bruce wants things written out more, but just to get like, as Jesse said, we kind of have three priorities. And we discussed two of them in depth today. Um, but I think it might be helpful for us to just condense. And put those three at the top and make sure that we're all on the same page about them.
Sure, I think that's fine.
What are the three Angus? I mean, I think I know, but tell me what your three are.
Yeah. So I mean, the, the first one is continuing with the North Amherst overlay. Um, the second one is forty Y areas, which I think could potentially include. Row house discussion.
Yep.
Depending on, on how we think about forty, forty Y. Uh, so I guess maybe be forty Y slash row house, right? Just like houses that are more affordable starter home type. And then the third category would be, um, thinking about main corridors and RVC BBC, which are kind of, again. Aligned and, but also maybe a little bit separate, but I think those are the three categories we were thinking about.
Yep, that's my reflection, great.
Where is the, uh, the, oh, there it is. Corridors.
I'm typing some notes. I'll, um, yeah, I mean, this, this was meant to, you know, this is a, I was hoping this could stay a list and maybe I'll, um, expand a little bit. And then we can, if these are the three, we could start working on like a separate document, uh, maybe. Um, yeah, just because, you know, we don't have a great way to. You know, this is the, to keep track of it. I don't, what hap, what's happened in the past is we have a, a list like this and then we work on it and then we. Save over it and then we lose, lose it. But I, I think, you know, there's, you know, twenty, thirty things listed here, which I think are worth. Um, examining. And so I, I just wrote the three down again and I can work on this a bit.
Well, then this can be your list, Nate, uh, because I would like the, 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 the. What Angus suggests that, that then there's a, it's a focus that we can look at. But then you, you keep this list. So that the institutional memory is preserved.
Right. Yeah, because I think, you know, right, the zoning and how, you know, the subcommittee is looking at it. You know, I think what I took away from the planning board meeting is looking at, um, kind of limited site plan interview or administrative approval for a few different kinds of uses. Um, and then. Uh, maybe even, um, new definitions for apartments or townhouses. So examining how communities approach those, those uses. So.
Yeah, okay. Um, I see Janet's hand up again. Uh, Janet, I'm giving you speaking. Ability. So please unmute and go ahead.
That was a mistake.
Oh, okay.
A legacy hand.
All right, um, yeah, anything else? Great. I like this. I like to have some direction.
Yeah. Neither I like, uh, working with you all. I find this agreeable way to spend my time. Thank you all.
Agreed. Great.
Agreed.
So everyone, see you in a few weeks on the fourth of December.
Sounds good.
Okay.